We could get started with this part of the budget workshop. I would like to just go ahead and introduce Ms. O'Connor. I believe that this is the second workshop.
Yep, our second workshop.
Sure, before we do that, if we could just stand for the pledge. Thank you. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, welcome everybody to our second budget meeting. We'll talk about some operational areas tonight, specifically buildings and grounds and transportation. So without further ado, I'll introduce Mr. Mike Cruz, who is our plant facilities administrator.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for giving me the opportunity to present our proposed BNG budget. I'd like to start off with sixteen twenty sixteen hundred, operational non-instructional salaries. That's done at Central, as well as sixteen twenty sixteen ten. That's overtime as well. And also operational non-instructional substitutes and night differentials. Sixteen twenty two thousand is operational equipment. This code is used to purchase equipment like district vehicles, forklifts that are used daily. This is to increase or to upgrade a district's aging fleet, requesting a hundred percent increase. Sixteen twenty forty two ten, operational fire insurance. This code is used to provide commercial property insurance for all district buildings. A three point five percent increase is being proposed to cover anticipated costs of coverage for twenty-two twenty-three. Sixteen twenty forty-three thirty, operational installation of purchasing and leasing of containers. This code is used to maintain leasing fees for the growing need of storage containers. Examples are building lights disposal, related maintenance, storage containers, like food service, et cetera. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty forty-three fifty, operational uniform rental. This code is used to lease buildings and grounds, uniforms on contract, requesting an increase of eight percent due to rising cost of uniform cleaning. Sixteen twenty forty-four hundred, operational professional and tech services. This is for new employee drug testing, underground storage tank permits, material safety data compliance sheets, school due work order software, boiler inspections, Tetra Tech Architects Services and Vehicle Tracking Solution. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty forty-six eleven, operational cartridge dumping. This code is used for the rental of garbage containers and related cardboard disposal services. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty forty-six twenty, operational exterminator. This code is used to provide pest extermination services for the district. This is also being held level. Sixteen twenty forty-six forty-one, operational fuel oil. This code is used to purchase fuel oil needed to heat district buildings. We mostly use gas. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty forty-six sixty, operational building repairs. This code is used to make expected and unexpected repairs to all district buildings, including cesspools, roofs, abatements, boiler cleaning, gym wall inspections. We're proposing a seven point six increase due to the rising cost of contractor services to continue improvements in building renovations. Sixteen twenty forty-six eighty, operational upkeep of grounds. This code is used to make expected and unexpected repairs to all district properties, irrigation, sport fields, paint, signage, ice melt, mulch fertilizer and seed. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty forty-six ninety, operational propane natural gas. This code is used to purchase natural gas needed to assist in heating district buildings and also supplying gas in kitchens for cooking. An increase of four point eight percent is required to cover anticipated supply costs. Sixteen twenty forty-seven seventy, operational electricity is used to cover the cost of electricity for all district buildings. A decrease of one hundred percent is due to expected implementation of the district's EPC solar projects going online and feeding the electrical grid. Sixteen twenty forty-seven eighty, operational telephone. This is used for telephone communication, is being reduced by five thousand due to a decrease in use of analog to digital access. Sixteen twenty forty-seven eighty-five, operational water is used to pay for the water needs of the district, which includes cooking, pool maintenance, irrigation for athletic fields. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty forty-nine hundred, operational services from Bosse's is used for providing technical testing services like lab results for abatements and lead-in water testing in Telepath, J.C. Broderick, Environmental Services and Inhere, to name a few. An increase of seventy-one point four percent is requested due to increase of environmental services and the recent changes in lead-in water requirements. Sixteen twenty five thousand, operational supplies. This is a supply code to reflect its use for purchasing office supplies, furniture supplies, and in addition, use for supply purchases of in-house renovations and improves, for example, framing, sheet rock, et cetera, requesting an increase to continue various school renovation projects. Sixteen twenty fifty-one hundred, operational pool supplies is used to purchase pool chemicals like chlorine, pH chemicals and additional pool supplies. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty fifty-four hundred, operational custodial supplies. This code is used to purchase cleaning supplies like paper products, detergents and sanitary chemical supplies used daily by all building cleaning staff, requesting an increase of twelve point five percent due to our continued efforts in providing additional sanitizing products and equipment to improve our cleaning capabilities. Sixteen twenty fifty-four ten, operational playground equipment. This code is used to purchase replacement playground equipment, parts as needed. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty fifty-four forty, operational electrical supplies. This is used to purchase supplies needed to repair and expand electrical systems district-wide. We're holding this level. Sixteen twenty fifty-five hundred, operational glass supplies. This code is used to purchase glass and window repair supplies district-wide, requesting an increase of seventy-five percent due to the need of repairs of our aging windows and an increased use due to COVID. Sixteen twenty fifty-five ten, operational painting supplies is used to purchase paints, paint brushes and materials where needed, requesting an increase of eighteen percent as part of our renovation projects in the district. Sixteen twenty fifty-five thirty, operational heating supplies is used to purchase replacement parts as needed to keep district boilers, UVs and air handlers operating. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty fifty-five sixty, operational roofing and quaking. This code is used to purchase roofing membrane and materials needed to repair roofs. This is being reduced to twenty thousand due to numerous building roof replacements and preventive maintenance. Sixteen twenty fifty-six ten, operational ceiling supplies. This code is used to purchase ceiling tiles for repairs due to water damage or renovations. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty fifty-six twenty, operational flooring supplies. This code is used to purchase replacement floor tiles, rugs, stair treads and related supplies. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty fifty-six thirty, operational shade and blind supplies. This code is used to purchase supplies for repairs to shades and blinds district-wide. This is being held level. Let me see. Sixteen twenty-one sixteen hundred, maintenance non-instructional salaries as done by contract. Sixteen twenty-one sixteen ten, maintenance non-instructional salaries overtime. This is used for additional hours that are needed for maintenance staff, which includes boarding events, music functions, inclement weather and emergency maintenance repairs, as well as renovations and improvements where needed, requesting an eight point three percent increase as part of building improvements and also building coverage for after-school and weekend activities. Sixteen twenty-one two thousand, maintenance equipment. This is used to purchase new equipment as needed. We are in the process of replacing aging equipment. Examples are grounds and maintenance vehicles, plows for snow removal and large field mowing equipment. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty-one forty-six fifty, maintenance building equipment repairs. This code is used to make expected and unexpected repairs to all BNG maintenance and grounds equipment. This is being held level. Now we're going into the maintenance codes. Sixteen twenty-one forty-six seventy, maintenance building equipment repairs. This code is used to make preventative maintenance repairs and expected repairs to equipment in all buildings. Tasks include parking drainage, roof drainage, elevator repairs, building air management and exhaust fans, et cetera. We're requesting an increase of twenty-seven point two percent to continue with repairs to aging equipment. Examples are building management system controllers, aging HVAC air handlers. The next code is sixteen twenty-one forty-six eighty, maintenance improvement of grounds is used for maintaining district-wide grounds, requesting it be held level. Sixteen twenty-one fifty-four twenty, maintenance welding supplies. This code is used to purchase materials and supplies for welding repairs district-wide. This is used by our auto shop plumbers and heating technicians. We're holding this level. Sixteen twenty-one fifty-four fifty, maintenance plumbing supplies is used for the purchase of materials and supplies for plumbing repairs district-wide. We're proposing an increase of fifty percent due to the state's updated lead-in water testing requirements, which have reduced the parts per billion threshold from fifteen parts per billion to five parts per billion in the district water supplies. Sixteen twenty-one fifty-four sixty, maintenance hardware supplies is for hardware supplies purchased is used by all trades. An increase of six thousand is required as part of the district's renovation and repair products. Items that are purchased here are at times available using this code. Sixteen twenty-one fifty-four seventy, maintenance lumber supplies is used for purchasing lumber and related materials to manufacture classroom sink countertops, window counters and also renovation projects. An increase of seventy-five percent is requested to continue the district's renovation and improvements. Sixteen twenty-one fifty-four eighty, maintenance metal and fence supplies is used for purchase of fencing supplies and related materials, gate hinges, et cetera. This is being held level. Sixteen twenty-one fifty-four ninety, maintenance tool supplies is used for the purchase and repair of tools used in our maintenance and grounds department. This is also being held level. The remaining, one, two, three, four, five, six. Sixteen twenty-one, actually, maintenance tool supplies, maintenance fertilizer and seed, maintenance locksmith supplies, maintenance asphalt, maintenance masonry and sand, maintenance salt are all being held level. And that's about it as far as the buildings and grounds proposal. If anyone has any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So forty-six fifty, BNG equipment and repairs. Did you say we're replacing vehicles?
Um, yes.
We are, right?
Yes, we are. There's quite a few. Most of our vehicles, they're in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, no, exactly. And I agree with you. And I agree with you wholeheartedly. What kind of vehicles do you expect to be? How many vehicles and what kind of vehicles are do you expect to be replaced in this year?
We're actually looking into at the very least four. We're looking at pickup trucks and also vans. What's unfortunate is we've already started that process of trying to get proposals. What's unfortunate is that there's not too much supply out there. Yeah, so I mean, I'm kind of hoping that, you know, that we could definitely find something so we don't, you know, we don't lose out.
So the only reason why I'm bringing it up is because what is the total that you're proposing for the 2022, this following school year?
I don't have it in front of me.
I see fifty-five thousand, and it seems a little low.
It's actually the code above that, the two thousand level code where you'd buy vehicles from, the equipment code. And there's an additional equipment code in the sixteen twenty area as well.
Yes.
That we increased quite a bit in the sixteen twenty area.
Okay, so it's the two thousand code.
It's the sixteen twenty-two thousand.
It's the sixteen twenty-two thousand. Okay, that makes much more sense. I think that...
Still low, still low, seventy-five grand there, but...
Yeah.
Then you have the hundred and forty thousand.
Exactly, yeah.
Sixteen twenty-one two thousand.
Right.
Sixteen twenty-one...
Two thousand?
Two thousand, and which is the other code?
The sixteen, all the ones that end in two thousand, so sixteen twenty-two thousand and sixteen twenty-one two thousand. So one has a hundred and forty thousand in it.
Two thousand.
I have what I think may be a related question.
So, and... Okay, so...
And a hundred and fifty. So there's two hundred and ninety thousand in equipment in this area.
And that is specifically for vehicles, right?
Specifically for BNG. It could be other things.
Exactly, specifically for vehicles for BNG.
It could be other things other than vehicles as well.
Okay, and I guess that's the next question that I had. And I don't know if forty-six seventy would apply, but I remember when we did, Paul and I did the tours of BNG, that storage facility, that warehouse facility that looked like an old hangar.
Yeah.
You know, it's so, you know, twelve years ago when we were walking through it, or maybe even ten years ago when we were walking through it, it needed to be replaced. I don't know if we ever did anything with that, but, you know, certainly now, you know, when we have the money to do these things, these projects within the district, something like that should be looked into. Is that what you're referring to here? Is that something that you are looking at here?
Yeah, we definitely are exploring all that. We do have a few proposals, but so unfortunate again, materials. At times, you know, they'll give us a proposal and we say, listen, we definitely, we definitely need some shelter for many of the equipment that we have. But we are definitely looking into that. We do have quite a few proposals.
Okay, so that's built into your budget now?
Yes.
Okay, specifically the entire building that's on the east side, all the way in the back to get our equipment out of the climate and into...
That's what we're planning, that's what we're wishing for.
No, I get it, I get it. I just want to make sure that that is exactly what is being planned.
We're actually looking at, you know, the area that you're referring to is called the Butler Building, and it's, we're trying to get one constructed on the other side. In order to remove the one that you're referring to, that is, that's going to create an abatement because it is considered, you know, part of a building, believe it or not. So there's a lot going on with that, so we, you know, yeah, it's a process.
So you want to build the replacement before you actually take that down?
We're actually holding all the equipment now, yeah. As soon as you drive up on the left-hand side, that's where the green machine trailer is. And, you know, quite a few of the, you know, the lawn cutting machines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Mike has done quite a bit of work in that area when you drive into the right to really clean it out, so it's looking a lot better there as well.
Yeah, that was, it was a boneyard, and that was where we had a lot of, it really was.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, yeah, all right, that's great because again, you know, we, you know, we absolutely, you know, have, you know, been blessed with a tremendous amount of funding and now it's time to rebuild the district, really. I mean, that's really what we're talking about so that we are, you know, setting us up for the next fifty years to come.
That's the game plan.
And I would just, and I would just, you know, I would just say, you know, and I've had this conversation with Stacy, you know, when we are replacing, when we are looking at this, we have to look for longevity. So sometimes the cheaper way out is not necessarily the best way if we're looking to, you know, build the community back or the district back for the next fifty years. You know, the gauge on the steel, you know, might be thinner on the cheaper product and we might get it for less money. We might want to consider going with something that's a little bit better, a little bit more longevity. Just, I know you're an expert in this, but I just wanted to, you know, just throw that...
Yeah, we definitely, and we always try to do that, but we also have to be considerate that, you know, we definitely want to kind of make sure that we're not, you know, overusing the funds, so to speak.
Sure, sure.
Definitely.
Sure.
Well, Mike, you mentioned something about windows earlier. Are we replacing all the windows or some of the windows?
What we're doing is the windows were installed, I would say about nine, maybe ten years ago. And so they're now getting to that point where they're, the mechanical aspect of like, you know, what we call the balancers, they're starting to fail. And so now with the, also with the increase of opening and closing the windows, it's definitely becoming a lot more troublesome for, you know, the faculty and staff to be able to lift some of them. So we've been replacing quite a few, and, you know, that could be, that's reflected on our drawdown accounts. Yeah.
And I know that in the past, we've had broken windows and we used to have glazers that came in and took care of that. Are we replacing that position?
So what we've been doing is I've, we've been instructing our own guys, like the heads and chiefs, to do those types of maintenance with the assistance of our maintenance crew. That's a huge savings as opposed to having a company come in and replace all, you know, those windows. It's just, that becomes, you know, astronomical in my opinion, and this is something that our guys can do. And they have been doing, actually.
So if we're replacing a window, can we add a window AC?
It's not that simple.
I have a question, Mike. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just going back to fourteen, sixteen twenty-one forty-six seventy. So I also had a little mark on that because it's repairs. I know you just explained that's going to include the rebuilding or building a new building, but it just sounded to me like three hundred and fifty thousand is a lot of money for repairs if we're buying new equipment. And along the same line that Robert mentioned, is it worth holding on to old equipment and putting money into repairs?
All right, this particular code, the one you're referring to, is that sixteen twenty-one forty-six seventy?
Forty-six seventy.
All right, that's used for preventative maintenance repairs. When things, you know, break down, there's parking drainage. We have, I mean, we have numerous parking lots, one of which is East Middle. Most, some of those cesspools collapsed, and so they all have to be, you know, it's getting to the point where now, because of the age of all of, you know, our buildings, we have to, you know, repairs, you know, or not just repairs, but, you know, the replace. I mean, this also includes the elevator repairs and also the building air management, the BMS system. Those are all new electronic equipments with our, I believe it's the previous EPC. They replace a lot, well, actually, they installed a lot of BMS systems where, you know, we can actually manage this from our computer, you know, each one of the buildings. So many of the controllers, you know, that, you know, like they speak to each other and then they speak to a main computer, so to speak, they're starting to fail. And, you know, we have to replenish that. That definitely comes with a cost. That's what we're starting to see in quite a few buildings, and thus the reasoning behind that increase. In addition to that also is some of this stuff you can't find. Once it breaks down, usually we can get a replacement. But because of the age of the equipment, believe it or not, the electronic equipments after like five years, they're obsolete. And so now you're, you know, kind of like, you know, you have to purchase something that's, you know, a little bit newer and, you know, if, you know, for communication purposes and all that, it's, it just, that's the reason for this increase.
Thank you, that explains it. So what we were discussing before is not on the same line? The building at the...
No, the vehicles would come from the code above that with sixteen twenty-one two thousand.
Right, not just the vehicles, but the actual, like that air hangar?
The Butler Building?
Which line is that under?
Um, that would be, interesting.
We would probably build that into like a bond issue or something.
I don't think that's...
Yeah.
Yeah, because that exceeds that, but we still can purchase, you know, like sheds or stuff like, you know, so we can at the very least, you know, protect the equipment that we have now.
But maybe I misunderstood. I thought that we were building a new structure so that we can demolish the old one.
We are looking into doing that.
But it's not in this budget.
It's not going to be in a line item like this.
Yeah, it'll be in a transfer to capital line or something within the budget.
That'd be a big expenditure.
Yeah.
That requires building, you know, permits and, you know, approvals from the town and, yeah.
Does that have to go to SED?
Yeah.
That does too, right?
Yeah, so there's, it's quite a process, as you know.
Okay.
But that would come from our, probably our capital reserve fund?
Yep.
I just thought we were having the discussion about this line item in relation to that, so I was a little confused.
So I just want to say that in the meantime, there is a plan to get replacement buildings that aren't as...
What he just mentioned, temporary structures.
Exactly, yeah.
And that would come from this line?
Yes, it would.
From forty-six fifty?
Um, that's just for preventive maintenance, sixteen twenty-one forty-six seventy.
Right, that's the one that I'm talking about, that, okay.
It depends how we would go about the project, where we would put it in the budget, so we'd have to kind of figure out our plan of attack and then...
But those temporary structures aren't coming out of forty-six seventy, right?
They're going to be in the budget somewhere, probably even a transfer to capital for that, just to, you know, that's more of a one-time expenditure. This is his ongoing operating budget.
Oh, okay.
But I, because we just said forty-six seventy, the temporary structures, maybe?
It started, Robert had started on forty-six seventy about the vehicles, but then we said, no, that's in two thousand, and then we got into talking about the temporary...
All right, so the temporary structures on that in this budget either, or they are in forty-six seventy?
It's not in that budget line, no.
Because even the playgrounds, he has the operation of keeping, of keeping the playgrounds where you don't actually have the new playground hall.
That's not in this code, no, definitely not. You know, that's just for repairs, so it's actually very minimal. That's, I think that's about...
Yeah, it's very, very...
Yeah, it's not...
Muriel, I'm glad you brought that up, actually, because we just received a bulletin in our homes this week, and it had in it that all the elementary schools were getting new playgrounds, and I don't remember having that discussion. So I know some have throughout, you know, recent years, but not all. And it said all elementary and middle schools, is that something?
We're having, we did have a lot of different discussions about the playgrounds. As a matter of fact, I think we're having, they're breaking ground at North Middle. Remember we discussed, oh my God, what is that thing called again?
Ninja course.
Oh, Ninja course, right, yeah.
But it's not at all the middle schools, am I correct?
So not all of the elementary schools are getting a playground?
But it did say that in the bulletin.
It did.
I just feel...
No, but okay, so the middle schools are getting the ninja playgrounds and also the freshman center.
Freshman center as well.
The other, actually, I believe it's Oak Park, Pine Park and Southwest.
They are getting, Oak Park is getting a century playground as well as...
Southwest.
Southwest is getting a century playground.
And also East K, right?
I know there were three in our plan that's still on our website, so that's why I was confused when I read that all schools were...
Right.
And the others are also getting playgrounds, but not as the century...
Not those special ones.
Yeah.
So we are getting new playgrounds at all elementary schools?
Yes, we are, yes.
Are we able to do one for MDQ and the UPK over there?
No, we couldn't build on their property, that's not ours.
Ah.
Where is that?
MDQ, I mean, UPK, the UPK at the Shepherd's Gate in MDQ.
I have a question, yes. On page two, sixteen twenty-five thousand, operational supplies. Can you just explain the increase there? What number for me? Sixteen twenty-five thousand.
Sixteen twenty-five thousand, that's operational supplies?
Yes.
This is supply clause code to reflect the purchasing of, in the past, we use it for office supplies and furniture supplies. And now it's, we're also using it for additional purchases for in-house renovations and improvements, for example, framing, you know, all of the renovations, you know, those materials have to come out of an operational supply code.
So you put, you added more items to that budget?
Yeah, because it's an operational supply code. Sometimes, you know, we, I mean, we try to utilize the codes as best as possible wherever the vendor, wherever the vendor, you know, is on that list, on that supply code list. Sometimes we're not successful. They might not have the materials, so we have to branch out and get another, you know, try to utilize another code that has a vendor that has the materials that we need so that we can continue with the renovation.
Do you find now with things increasing and you can't get certain supplies, and when you do, it's costing more money?
We do, we definitely do. Where, it's, it's, it just adds to a difficult task, you know, trying to get the materials. Sometimes we can't, sometimes we have to, you know, kind of like order it from different vendors, which at times makes it difficult because we know we can get a, you know, at a much lesser cost. But because that, the first vendor doesn't have it in stock, now we have to spend a little bit more in order to complete that task. I wouldn't say surcharges. Every vendor has their own purchasing list. I wouldn't really call it surcharges. They might be surcharges, but, you know, we're not going to see it. It's always hitting in the cost.
How many sanitizer machines do we currently have in the district?
Which type of sanitizer?
For COVID-19.
Okay, we, actually, I believe each building should have a victory spare. That's something that we purchased last year. We have backpacks, and in the event that we don't have each building, or let's say sometimes, you know, we get a request to have them, and, you know, like in the high school, so to speak, that's a very large school, obviously. So we'll, you know, if there is a request to have specific areas done, we'll take the machines from one, let's say, elementary school, and we'll bring it to the high school so that, you know, there's, let me see, in the Ross, there's about eleven guys or twelve guys at night, and in the Sandaling, there's about fifteen guys at night. So, you know, that's, you know, we try to kind of like make sure that we can utilize the timeframe, you know, that shift to be able to, you know, get as much possible yield, you know, in sanitizing.
Are we purchasing any additional?
Yeah, we definitely, we are, that's definitely on the list. What's, the product that we use, it has a shelf life. So we have to be careful of, you know, not purchasing too much, but have enough. That particular product, unfortunately, everybody wants it, and, you know, that comes with a cost. You know, supply and demand, that's where the prices come up. I'm sure there's a surcharge in there too.
You spoke about the ceiling supplies. So you think ceiling, how long?
You know, what's unfortunate, like in the high school and a couple of other schools, and we're actually, I'm making up a list, there are numerous ceiling tiles, like one-by-one ceiling tiles. Actually, I believe in South Middle and East Middle, they have one-by-four ceiling tiles. You can't even buy that. But in the areas that we can, yeah, we are definitely trying to replenish as much of the ceiling tiles because some of them are atrocious, unfortunately, but, you know... We have, we have, we have definitely, we've removed quite a few. You know, what's unfortunate is at night, actually, we can only do most of that work at night. And again, that comes with a cost of overtime, the maintenance guys and all. But in the summertime, we try to capitalize on that, our guys, again, with training... the summertime, we try to capitalize on that, our guys, again, we're training our guys on how to replace them, it's, you know, not an easy task, um, especially, you know, you want it done right.
We're going to replace a lot of that at the high school through the bond issue we passed last May.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that'll get done, at least at the high school. The freshman center, when you walk in, we replaced all of that already. That was through the energy performance, that looks fantastic. Um, down here in this building, we did the west wing, if you look there. And, um, any place that they're doing new construction, um, or renovations, I should say, like special services, or, you know, even on the second floor now what they're doing, it's all new ceilings.
It's my hope that we get rid of all of the stained.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's not pleasing to the eye, you know? As a taxpayer, I'm like, and I know the money that's coming into the district, you know, that's not our only concern, we also want to put money into the education for our students, but, you know, it's, you know, you don't want the students sitting in a leaking room or, you know, a, a dirty room, because it makes it look dirty. It might be clean, but if I come in, you know, I just, my, I will go right to that spot, and I'm like, it is over here, I'm like, okay, what, what are we going to do with that one?
Yeah, it, it pains me to see that, trust me, and every time I go into one of the buildings, I'm, you know, like, I have quite an extensive list of things that I want to do. Unfortunately, we're a little limited with that, but in addition to the ceiling tiles, when we're replacing them, uh, we're also replacing, uh, the lighting as well. So that also gives it sort of like a nice ambient, you know, feeling as you're walking in the hallway or whatever offices, you know?
Because it's important to feel welcoming in each building.
Absolutely.
I mean, but, but to your credit, Mike, I mean, I just, you know, we are now able to do work.
Right.
That was just a patch job before, now we can renovate, now we can replace, because the money is, you know, is there and it's in the pipeline. Um, so I think that, you know, we'll, it'll be years before, you know, before we finish that list, and by the time we finish the list, we'll have a new list, you know?
And I appreciate, you know, the work you guys are doing.
Yeah.
I, as, just as a board member and a parent, a grandparent in the district, you know, I wonder as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, I'm going to ask the hard questions, just like everybody else.
Oh, absolutely. Trust me, I'm capitalizing on the fact that we, uh, have a...
Yeah, and I understand, it's like a home, right? You start fixing the bathroom, and then by the time the bathroom's starting to, you know, get itself together, now something's blown in the kitchen, and now you got to start that project, so it's always going to be a project, right?
Definitely, yeah. Well, whenever we do it, uh, any type of renovation, that's my first thing. Um, I want to replace all of the wiring, the aging wire, um, especially like in this building, this building is, was built a long time ago, and at any possible opportunity we would have, you know, to replace, you know, um, not just the electrical, but also, you know, we always have the IT guys come in, replace the, also the net, network drops, you know? Um, yeah, we definitely capitalize on that. I, I'm not one for Band-Aids, you know, it's, you know, I just, I'm not for that. I, I like to do the job, you know, right the first time, you know, because we don't have the, we barely have the time to do it right the first time, you know?
So I have a question, are there any projects that we can, not that we want to put off, obviously, we need the really, you know, um, critical projects, but because supplies are so expensive? Do we anticipate that at some point they'll come down, or are there any projects we can kind of, you know, hover around and wait till, you know, maybe they come down?
The crazy part about that is that, you know, this particular, I don't even think you can call it a trend, um, it's so unpredictable, and if we even consider waiting to do the work that, you know, we should be doing, it's, it's just, I mean, we're, I, in my opinion, we're already kind of like a little bit behind.
Okay.
So we try, I try, you know, like, I, I just want to, I just want to push forward.
No, I get it, you know, like I lead to examples.
Projects that sometimes, I've even talked to Stacy about it, I, you know, I kind of feel like sometimes like the lockers that are being replaced, you know, that, you know, the, um, the quote has changed a couple of times. But, um, my fear is that later on, it might go up even higher, so let's get it done now, you know?
And all these, uh, projects that are in this budget are realistic, like we're going to be able to get them done this year?
Absolutely, that's, that's my goal, definite. I mean, I, I, uh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Does any of your electrical tie in with, like, say Byron with security? Do you guys kind of share a cost on some of the electrical or some of those projects? Because I know we had a presentation, I want to say, what, four or five years ago? We were thinking about implementing a whole new system, PA system, lockdown system.
We did.
Oh, we did.
Any kind of projects that we do, I always confer with Candace, um, I always talk with Byron, I, um, I send out calendar invites, letting them know what we're doing, what we're, uh, if a contractor's going to be in the building. We always have that conversation beforehand, uh, and, you know, I try to get as much input as possible.
Yeah, I just, uh, so, I just wanted to make, you know, like, I guess a comment and maybe just ask Stacy, so, um, on the, um, that hundred thousand dollar drop in terms of electricity, um, and that's, uh, forty-seven seventy, sixteen twenty, forty-seven seventy, I see the trend is, you know, is continues to go down since nineteen twenty, right? Um, it's a hundred thousand dollars now, it, it, we may actually see more of a savings, right, than that, so we...
That's the idea.
There's a very good chance that, that we'll see more of a savings, you know, as all of our solar panels come online. I didn't, you know, Mike and I talked about this too, you know, should we drop it more? We just want to wait until it's online, we know it's operational, and then the following year, I anticipate a, a large drop in that code.
That's, that's great, and, and listen, and I, and I always have, you know, admired how, how you, you do the budgeting, because it is on the conservative side. Um, but I just, you know, I just wanted to make note, you know, of, of that, that, you know, it is trending down, and we are not even fully operational yet, so that is going to be very exciting for, for the district and for, um, you know, for the taxpayers, you know, that that is, uh, wonderful news. I mean, how, how much longer before you think we are done with, with the, with the solar project?
Um, the high school is going to be the big project, I don't even think we're going to touch that till next summer. So I would say maybe the end of next year, till we're done.
Twenty twenty-three?
Twenty-three, yeah.
Oh, no, the end of, uh, this year.
Twenty-two, yeah.
I'm sorry, the end of this year.
When she said next summer, this summer.
This come, yeah, the summer of twenty-two, I'm sorry, it's the next school year.
This summer is when we anticipate doing the high school.
And I just wanted to clarify my question about the PA system, a lot of parents don't real, didn't realize or do not realize that we had replaced all of the systems and, within the district, and we have new lockdown mechanisms, so it's, you know, just a reiteration of the fact that we could take care of that.
Something separately, I haven't really had a chance to talk to Stacy about this, but I would like to see some of our front doors, now that we do have, uh, we do have extra money, I would like to look at some of our, particularly starting with the elementary schools, some of the front doors, there are actually safety doors that you can now purchase, and they're fairly expensive. Uh, but you, you know, I think it's worth exploring and looking at the front doors in the elementary school, and then you have, uh, what is it, the trap door?
Mantraps?
Uh, what's that?
Call them mantraps.
Mantraps, thank you.
The second set of doors.
Trap door, you know, I want to look to, we want to look to getting in the mantraps, which means that you, you can come through the front door, but not go through the second door. And, uh, if you take a look at our doors, they're old, I mean, they're, they're old, and I think it's time that we take a look at the type of doors that we purchase and replace, and then also the security system at that door. But we have, you know, I think Candace and, and her crew, they've added the cameras, obviously, we have them in all of the, uh, doors. Now, you come, you come up, you have your doorbell, you have your camera, that's, uh, on the principal's desk, that's on, uh, some of the clerical's desks as well, is, and also the, uh, security desk in front. So we've done a lot, but I think the next is now we start looking at those entryway doors.
I guess that's another conversation when Byron comes to present.
Yeah, you know what, he absolutely should be a part of it, obviously, Mike will be, uh, you know, part of it as well, but, and I haven't had an opportunity, because it's actually been something I've been, you know, kind of reading and researching myself, and I do think it's something that the district should consider when we go forward.
Along that line, can we get rid of some of the old, non-functioning bells in the building? I'm pretty sure we still have, you know, every building's different, but sometimes you, it's not just us, because I go to other districts too, and sometimes it's three doorbell buttons, but only one works, or one is the one that's actually going to put the door open. So if we could somehow get like a handle on that at some point, I think would be easier for...
We do that on purpose, because we have a little fun, just watching people press the different buttons, it's the only fun we get, really.
Doors different, you know, every school's different.
By the time you get to that one, it's the other one.
Oh, right, oh, that's true too, right? We, we enter in different doors, right?
So somehow I would like uniformity, I like that.
There must have been a reason behind that, I'm not sure what the reason was, but there, some of the doors are different, you're right. I do want to say that, you know, Mike is, has been incredible. Uh, you know, he really does amazing work for us. Now, the energy performance contract, that's been non-stop now for, I don't know, about four years now, right? I mean, really?
I would say that.
You know, Mike is there for every project, every project. Now, we've done some work here, we've done some work over at special services, uh, we're constantly, you know, reconfiguring offices throughout the, the buildings, the high school, you know, we're adding, you know, we, we added, uh, social workers and guidance counselors, all of that requires a major, you know, requires, you know, construction, and we have carpenters there, we have electricians, we have plumbers, and Mike is involved in every project in the district, and I want you to stop and think that we have seventeen schools, twenty, over twenty buildings, and he's involved in everything. And, um, you know, he's there at every function. This Saturday, I wanted to ask him about, you know, the preparation that's going into the snow, uh, that's coming up. He will be up, uh, as soon as the snow starts, he'll probably stay up all Friday night, he'll be here all day Saturday, and then it's probably going to require, you know, if it's as bad as they say, work on Sunday, and he'll be here on Monday, making sure all of the sidewalks are clear. Like, he, he's just involved in everything, and I think he should be absolutely applauded, because he's a tremendous, uh, employee for us, and really unsung in a lot of, you know, and, and thankless too, because, you know, anything that goes wrong, we also call him. So when he's talking about like a collapse of a, you know, a cesspool, he's on site, okay? And he's on, then he's calling the vendors, and he's there when the contractors show up, and I talk to him, you know, at all different times of the day and night, always calls back within seconds, if he doesn't pick up the phone, he'll call back, and then there hasn't been one thing I've ever asked, said, Mike, can you do this? Uh, he goes, I, I'm on my way over now. And I don't know where he is, but he's somewhere, and he, he'll show up wherever you ask him to within five minutes. It's really quite remarkable, and I, you know, I want to thank him publicly, because I think he's done a tremendous amount of work.
I think we're also fortunate that Mike lives nearby, so you can call him, and he'll be almost anywhere within like five minutes.
That was a mistake, that was a mistake, Mike.
Don't move.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next area of the budget that we're going to cover is transportation, I have Eric Carland here to go over that portion.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Feliciano, Board President, Mr. Loesch, Superintendent, Board Trustees, Central Administrators, Operational Personnel, people watching at home, uh, thank you for this opportunity to present this district's transportation budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
About the custodians in the hallway.
School, yeah, and then, look at everybody, I'm going to shake their hands later.
I have a question before you start, do we have what you're going to go over?
It's the fifty-five-ten area.
It's at the bottom of three, page three.
Fifty-five-ten?
Yeah, fifty, fifty, it's at the bottom, under sixteen twenty-one where Mike left off?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, well, that's where I'll start. So, um, transportation, it's, uh, it's kind of been a bear this year. As everybody knows, there's been shortages of drivers, it's hard to find people, we're operating down some buses, we're, our loads are pretty high, um, but we're trying to do the best we can to get the kids to school, obviously, it's very important, and they don't learn, I, you know, I don't know personally, I know my kids with the remote instruction, that was a disservice, as hard as we tried and did the best we could, there's nothing replaces in school instruction. So to start, um, we're going to start at fifty-five-ten, fifteen hundred, that's basically just an indirect cost code. Uh, at the end of the year, people's salaries are budgeted in other areas, uh, such as mine, superintendent Stacy's, people in the buildings who do transportation, take calls, deal with kids. What we'll do at the end of the year to maximize our state aid is we will charge that to a transportation code, since they are directly working towards the transportation operation, uh, it's just, they're funded elsewhere, so that's why you don't see any budget there, it's zero, but you will see expenditures, as that's something I do at the end of the year, when we do the ST three, we charge off the expenditures for transportation to maximize the aid. Fifty-five-ten, sixteen hundred, that's our central staff there in, in the office, um, that's contractual increase. Fifty-five-ten, sixteen oh-one, that's overtime, we haven't had as much staff in there, we're asking for a three thousand dollar increase there to help out with some of the work in the office. Fifty-five-ten, nineteen hundred, that's CSE bus managers, that's our driver's assistants, we like to call them, um, they go on all the buses where it's mandated per IEP, as per special services, um, that's a contractual increase, we're looking for a little bit of extra hours, we've had some tough time with staffing, just as drivers, just as drivers' assistants, people getting out there who want to sit on a bus with kids and big numbers, uh, in spite of the current pandemic. So we're, you know, we're, we're leaning more on the current staff we have, as opposed to being able to attract more, although we're constantly looking to hire, uh, I'm always interviewing new staff whenever we could get them, um, so we're looking for a little bit of increase there to, to, to handle that. Fifty-five-ten, forty-four sixty, again, that's another indirect cost area, we don't budget anything there, uh, the money's budgeted in other areas, but such things as insurance, cleaning the buildings, meetings, things that Mike does for the program, the custodial staff that walk into our office, we charge all that stuff to the transportation section to maximize our aid in that area. Fifty-five-ten, forty-nine hundred, BOSI, yes?
Where are you going? I'm just, I'm confused, maybe it's just, so, but this is a transportation budget, so you, can you explain again, like, where do you charge it off at the end? Like, these areas that are like, this is minus a hundred percent, the other one was...
Yeah, yeah, so, so we don't budget, so if you're looking, you're talking about fifty-five-ten, fifteen hundred, and fifty-five-ten, uh, forty-four sixty? So, basically, you know, the superintendent's salary when we went over last time was budgeted in the twelve forty code, Stacy's salary and mine is in the thirteen ten code. But at the end of the year, what we'll do is, you know, the superintendent sometimes has to deal with, make some decisions in transportation, Stacy has to deal with some issues in transportation, I directly deal with a lot of stuff in transportation, we'll have a secretary at every single building, who has to answer transportation questions, deals with bus passes, handing them out, their budget in other areas, twenty, uh, twenty-ten or, you know, stuff like that. So at the end of the year, I do an indirect cost, I do a journal entry, so I'll take a portion of that salary, set up a spreadsheet, charge maybe five percent of their salary to transportation, and do a journal entry, and transfer the expense into these codes. So it's budgeted elsewhere, I just now charge the expense to these codes to maximize our aid, so when we claim transportation, we get good aid on that.
But what we're looking at is before those transfers, is that what you're saying?
Correct, so I don't, I won't budget anything there, they're budgeted in other places, but you'll see expenses, because we're trying to maximize the district's revenues. So it's just kind of a thing we do. You know, it'd be, it'd be so tough to budget five percent of someone's salary here, there, and a million other places. Does that explain it?
It doesn't.
Okay. Sorry about that if I was confusing at first. Fifty-five-ten, five thousand, well, fifty-five-ten, forty-nine-hundred, transportation BOSIs, I think, is where we left off. That's for our Edulog transportation system. It's our transportation management software. It's where we put all our buses on the system, assign the kids a bus pass. I say student, I call students. A bus pass and set everything up. And that manages our transportation and it's how we keep a handle on everything. Fifty-five-ten, five thousand, material and supplies, no increase there. And again, there was no increase with the, with the BOSI's code. I didn't think I got to that explaining the code. And that's, that's our central office operation of the transportation department. So that's our staff, that's what we do. And then the next area I'm going to get into is fifty-five-forty. This is where we pay for the contracted transportation, that we pay for other companies to do the services for us. The first five codes, fifty-five-forty, four thousand oh-one, oh-two, oh-five, oh-seven, these just relate to different types of buses. To run a transportation department, you'll have different number of buses with different number of hours. So you'll have a nine-hour bus that might be able to do, you know, start at the high school, move up to the middle school, do a freshman, do an elementary school run, might do a midday run, might have a late bus run, so that makes a nine-hour bus. Some other buses, you might be able to do three schools and get it done in a six-hour time period. Usually, there's a gap in the middle, obviously, when the kids are in school. Then we have certain lift buses for kids with, who require a wheelchair. Then we have four-to-six-hour vans in district. Those are for our in-district special needs students who require a minibus or if they have a medical need, any, any type of situation like that. We'll use an in-district van. And then we have the four-to-six-hours out-of-district vans, which are private parochial schools and things of that nature. The numbers are kind of moving a little bit all over. And it's partly because of COVID, and, well, it is because of COVID. It's not partly, it's all because of COVID. And, and really, what's happened was we've had to shift some of the buses around. We've, we're operating this year down ten six-hour buses for the large buses. And we're operating up for nine-four-hour buses, but down five-five-hour buses and ten-six-hour buses. And part of the reason with the smaller bus, it, it's kind of, we're forced to do it on the large buses. I hate to say it, we're just forced, we can't find the staff to get out there to transport. We've been trying the best we can. The transportation company does yeoman's job. They're trying to attract as many drivers as they possibly can to get in here. We've been able to skip along and get the services done. And, and we're running a very tight ship. And we're somehow getting it all done. It's kind of amazing.
I'm sorry, does that explain why fifty-five-forty, four thousand oh-two, we have a minus one-eighty-eight, one-nineteen, or two-point-three-one percent?
Yeah, so it's basically the shifting of the transportation. We're relying less on six-hour buses. So as we could get less buses, we're invoking more nine-hour buses to do the job, to try to pick up a piece here and a piece there and a piece there and then get rid of the six. You know, so it's, it's kind of how.
It's like a puzzle you're putting together.
Yeah, it's trying to put it together. It's, it is a, it's a, it's a bear. I'm sure you, our Edulog software, it's just amazing at what that really could do down to the stop, down to the student, down to the, you know, it's a, for private, parochial, in-district. Yeah, Edulog, that's what we purchased through BOSI's.
Yeah, when you think about what it accomplishes.
That's the maintenance on it, we've already purchased it.
We, we did purchase it for quite a bit more, but that's the yearly maintenance on it. For them to be responsive. What happens is every day, we get an upload from our e-school system. So the people working hard on registration, when they get a new student in, they put them in the e-school. At night, while we're sleeping, Candace has operations that'll run, that'll drop it into our Edulog software. In the morning, we're like, oh, look at all the students we got and what we have to do. And then we got to go and route them, put them on a bus. That's how kind of the whole process works. I like to say it's magic, but it's not. It's a lot of hard work. And we do have ladies there who do a great job, and the bus company does a wonderful job for us in that regard. But even, I was explaining the vans, the four, five, and six-hour vans. You could see we're up in four-hour vans, but we're down in the five and six-hour vans. And I think that's partly because of our private school, parochial school enrollment has decreased by a couple hundred students. So we're shifting more. What we would usually do is if we transport some of our in-district kids on one bus and then for a piece of it, we'd send them out to do a private or parochial run. We have less of those going out, so we don't need as many six-hours. We're dealing with more four-hours. So it, it's just kind of how things are affecting the transportation within the district. And we're trying to meet those needs and deal with shortages in drivers and trying to do the best we can there. And that's, that's basically from fifty-five-forty, four thousand one, to fifty-five-forty, four thousand one-oh-eight, that's our contracted transportation. We do use other pieces for fifty-five-forty, four thousand two, for interscholastic athletics. That's to get our sports teams to competitions when they're playing other schools. We have the same bus company come in and do that. Some, some of the activities are, you know, charter buses if we're doing states and stuff like that. If the kids are successful enough to get to that level, which I know a number of our teams have been performing at, at those levels to be able to participate in state-level activities. Fifty-five-forty, four thousand three, curricular activities, program handicap. That's if we need a specific bus for a specific reason. We budget ten thousand there. We haven't used it in a number of years, but if we don't have it there and something comes up, it's kind of, you know, we know it's there if we need it. Fifty-five-forty, four thousand three, curricular activities, high school. As you can see, in the last few years, we really haven't been doing a whole lot of curricular activities. We're kind of just focusing on the business of educating the students. Hopefully, we'll get back into that. There is no budget there this year, but we can do a budget transfer if needed. Fifty-five-forty, four thousand three-fifty, field trip central. We just always budget five thousand there, that's to help the buildings out if they want to run a field trip. I know the bus company offers some incentives when they have openings where there's buses are available. They'll give us to a, at a discounted price, we get that out to the buildings. Sometimes they jump on that and are able to afford a trip for the students to go to different places, to experience different things. Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Just remember from where I work in the district, finding money for transportation, for field trips is always challenging. Is there any way that we can put more money into the district, kind of an island, so that we can have field trips for our students?
I'm all for it, but that's going to be a bigger-than-me question. Sure.
You know, there are many, many opportunities for students to be able to go on and explore. And we're, you know, hopefully, the Sine Crown will be done.
Right.
And within a short period, if I know, we can start to do some of that. But I'd like to see that director, so we have this campaign.
But we'd be at a disadvantage because of COVID. You know, this was pre-COVID. You know, the kids, our students could go just about anywhere. But now, things are a little bit different, until we know that they can go to many, many other places. But it seems like a lot of schools aren't giving out many field trips because of the virus.
But I'm talking about my experience before we even knew about COVID.
I'm sorry.
But, you know, it's always been a challenge.
Yes, you're right.
To find money for. I'm sorry, my mic was off. It's always been a challenge to find money for especially transportation.
It's been more, it's been more than a challenge.
Parents will pay, but, you know, especially, like, I know, like, the Liberty Science Center has become a popular, you know, kind of a trip. But it's in New Jersey, so you have to, you know, it, it's a larger expense. So that kind of experience for our kids, when we're able to do it, I would like to make sure we have the money for it.
Yeah, there's a few ways that transportation occurs. And you're right, there, at one case, students fundraise, okay? That's, that's in a limited, you know, that's, that doesn't happen often. There are other ways. We have arts and ed, and I think they can apply for transportation there. We, I, I hear you. I mean, and actually, we've discussed it in cabinet where, you know, this year in particular, we did want kids to go on, on field trips. And we are, we are sending kids on field trips. They are going out. I'm sure if I ask Wanda and Rhonda, they'll, they'll, you know, tell us about a few off the top of their head. So we are sending kids on field trips, okay? There are, though, to your point, there are some places that have restricted and you can't, you can't get in anymore. But this year, we were determined to give our kids as many experiences as possible. Because I think one of the things that we do really well here, pre-COVID, was we did have, we did run lots of field trips, okay? And, and, you know, that's also, we're also, a lot of teachers right now are hesitant to, to take them on field trips. Because that's now a, a, an added responsibility because of the potential of, you know, contact tracing and COVID, et cetera. So, you know, but I do, as soon as the floodgates open, kids should, I think that's, we have so many great experiences here on Long Island, in the city. Obviously, the city, as you know, are really off limits. So some of the field trips that we used to do into the city are not occurring at all. But to your point, Julia, I mean, I, I think that that looks like a low-number field trips central. That was just something we started a few years ago, probably about four or five years ago, right? Where we just said, you know what, let's hold it, some money here at Central. So when people call us for a special trip, we'll take it out of here. But, you know, I, I, you know, increasing it, I would be, you know, all for it.
Right. I mean, it has increased. I, obviously, when we drew the budget in two thousand nineteen for two thousand twenty, we didn't know about COVID. But if you look at the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, that was thirty-eight-twenty-five. So even though we increased it and we haven't used it, I just want to make sure that we continue to have some monies.
Right. Could I ask, so, do you guys, do you remember some field trips that some of the kids have done?
I know large, small, there's a lot of field trips. They, but, but this year, they haven't turned as many. But they, like, I think about two or three field trips this year off the top of my head. I would not be able to remember, but I do know it's budgeted for. There's a whole list of field trips budgeted for in my six-eleven grant, but that's for the unaided population. I don't have funding available for all the students who need special needs, but those kids do go on trips and they do actually take advantage of the radio buses and go to the store. And they shop and they do things. I know they went to a pumpkin patch, they went to a museum, but they, you know, there's another trip that they went, it was like a colonial place. No, no, it's a colonial, like, from.
In Bethpage? William Floyd, that's the state over there?
Yeah, that's where they went. That's where they went. They just recently went to that, where, you know, I think it's, it looks like back in the days when Roosevelt.
By the colonial time.
Revolutionary War, like mob battle and stuff like that.
So, so to the point that I think that, that Ms. Young is making is that, is that I think that.
I have a forty-something.
Oh, the, oh, Bethpage.
That's what I said, Bethpage.
Okay.
So to the point that, that's being made, I, I think that there is also transportation money in other, you know, other accounts and other, in other departments.
And grants.
I think that the buildings also have their own, their own transportation money, just like special services does. And this is just a, a central, so central as in this, as in your office, as in central having the ability to say, okay, we have some money that's going to be able to go towards that.
For example, Sheriff Toulon, okay, is going to be, he was going to be inaugurated on January first. But because of COVID, he actually backed it up until March. So Chief and a bunch of MBK kids, okay, are going to take transportation over to the office and be there for their inauguration. Very excited about it. That, for example, will come out of this central field trip, okay? He gives me a call, I'll give him a budget code, say, okay, charge it to that, okay? Or very frequently, quite, to be quite honest and transparent, sometimes stuff in transportation, if I just give them a call, Eric or Stacy, they'll toss us a free field trip here and there.
Yeah.
It wouldn't come out their grant, then?
It, it won't come out, no, not this particular one. Yeah, this will come out of, we'll, we'll have to pay for the bus. But there were other times, to, to Robert's point, that a, a principal may pay for transportation at a certain budget code.
Yeah. I just remember one time, we had tickets donated to take students to see one of the popular Broadway shows. They, we, they were very good expensive seats and they were donated. And then we had to deal with the challenge of how do we get there? You know, how do we get forty-something kids into the city? And I don't remember exactly, I was working with one of the community organizations, if they paid or, you know, what hoops we had to go through, but I remember that being a challenge. And sometimes there are, you know, great opportunities that our kids can have. And if we could eliminate that challenge, I think it would just be, you know, a good idea to do.
We allocated funds under the emergency funds for field trips. So we have, we've taken a lot of money there. We use Title III and Title I as well. And I believe that we have like thirteen thousand dollars out of consulting also transportation that we have been using with the schools this year.
And the radio buses, I know that you mentioned, are a big asset.
I just wanted to add, I know that this board has really pushed far for inclusion and transportation. And I know Ms. O'Connor has done such a wonderful job of ensuring that, that the student with disabilities require a special bus. For someone to even go on a trip to Chaperone, I mean, recently this year, we had to pay for an adult to go on a trip, the, the bus driver had to stay overnighting, right? To support a student, you know, with a disability. And we have to pay for that special bus for that particular student to be involved.
I had a.
For pushing the inclusion because it's important that, that, that doesn't, you know, get in the way and to be able to pay, be able to do those type of activities.
I know we have the same con, or similar conversation when we talk about nurses, right? Because now nurses are required to go on trips, so.
Exactly. And very frequently, we have to, you know, pre-COVID, I guess, I don't know too much recently, but we were paying nurses to travel with certain students. And again, I think it's terrific. I mean, so no one is excluded.
I had a question in regards to the extracurricular activities. So like for next year, or hopefully soon, if we provide like after-school programs or tutoring or anything like that, you know, extended day or whatever, will transportation be able to cover that? Like, take the kids home?
Okay, that's, wow, that was like, you know what? You just brought up something that I was talking to Ms. Palmer about earlier today. And I actually was going to mention it to the board when I had a chance. But one of the things that we're trying to do this year is have extended-day programs, okay? As well as Saturday academies. But what we want to do is, is not just the Saturday academies, which you know have been successful. We're going to institute those as well. But we really do, you know, after speaking with the leadership, the principals, that many students would stay after school. Be easier for families, okay, if you're in an elementary school, to just stay an additional hour and get some intensive tutoring and one-on-one help or small group instruction, and then take a bus home at that point. Now, traditionally, we have not had late buses for elementary schools. So Ms. Palmer asked me about that today, and I know the, the whole cabinet's been working on this. And I haven't had a chance to ask Stacy, but I'm confident that we will be able to find some money, whether it's through grants or the general fund, and give kids this year extended-day program, okay? And then transportation home. And I think that would be a major help for kids. And I'm thinking twi, we're thinking twice a week in every school. So, you know, whether you're Twin Pines, whether you're Oak Park, Southeast, whatever the case may be. You know, right now, actually, I think it's posted today for teachers, or it's been posted. We're going to close, I think, on Friday. Then we see how many teachers, where it is. And then we're going to start, I guess, surveying the kids and the families, find out who will take advantage of this. And then we have to talk to transportation and we have to devise how we're going to get the kids home.
So the money that we receive because of the COVID, wouldn't that be money that we can utilize for this?
Yes, well.
It was meant to mitigate some of the losses.
No, it, it, that's right. That's part of the learning loss. They, they actually gave us a specific amount of money. And then they identified a certain amount of that money has to be spent for learning loss. So I'm certain that we're going to be able to take it. Right. I'm certain that we're going to be able to take this money out of those federal, that federal money that was sent to us.
Is that money included in this general fund or is there a separate kind of a?
That's a separate fund. It's separate, it's not in here at all.
Yeah, this is all, right, the general.
So even like what you're proposing then, we don't really have to find place here if we can take it out of that?
Yes.
Of money.
They've already, they've already, you know, remember Vincent actually presented it, but we actually have already divided up the money. And we do, and you can actually, you know, transfer the money within, you know, to, you know, within the fund. But, yeah, we've already identified for extended learning. Like, imagine that's where the transportation was.
Would that include, right, that's, that's my point. So I know we've budgeted for having some after-school activities. Did that include transportation when we did that initial budgeting?
That is something that we've talked about. But remember how Eric said about the indirect costs, how you see some lines without a budget, yet we transfer costs in? That's something I, that, the late transportation, I'd advocate to go into the general fund so we can get aided on it and push another cost into the stimulus funds, which won't, which aren't aided. So it's, if, when we figure out how we want to do something, then Eric and I will sit down together and figure out the best way to do it so we maximize our funds all around.
Right?
I love that aided, you know, that's fantastic.
So it's, it's an awesome idea because of the fact that there's some students that, you know, parents don't have transportation and could use, you know, the extracurricular activities or, you know, the extra help or the enrichment that we usually have. How about the summertime?
Well, again, that's going to be some, if you remember last year, we obviously had quite a few summer camps. And this comes up, you know, every single year, we talk about whether we should offer transportation. It's something that I think we're going to have to discuss again, right? Wanda, I know last year we talked, we wanted to run it. I know certain students do get it, you know, Rhonda. We'll look at it this year if we can pull it off. It's, it's not as easy as you think. And now, when I'm talking about the elementary kids, remember, the high school kids and middle school students and freshman center, they're used to what's called an activity run. So when we pick up a, you know, when somebody gets driven, they're not driven to their, their morning and afternoon bus stop. They're dropped off, they might be a couple of blocks away because they just drop off on a main street. That's an older student. So we really have to discuss how we're going. It's not as easy as, oh, we're going to just provide transportation because we have first graders. If, if they take, I don't know, we might be offering it to first and second graders, let's say, for argument's sake. They stay an extra hour, they're used to get, getting dropped off, you know, at a specific spot. So, you know, the question now becomes, do we offer that entire school's bus run, okay? As you can imagine, that can get costly. So these are all things that we'd have to, it sounds great, you know, but it's not as easy as it sounds. Plus, first of all, as Eric mentioned, we may not even have the bus drivers.
That's right.
That's number one.
But just, yeah, I think we need to keep equity in mind that, you know, the. But just, yeah, I think we need to keep equity in mind, that, you know, these things that we're mentioning should be available to all students, regardless of their ability or their parents' ability to bring them to a school, or pick them up from a school. So I would like us to just consider that a little more, you know, when we think about programming.
Sure, well, it's the reason we're going down this road, we think that we'll be able to help more kids, they're more inclined to stay an extra hour, and I'm just using an hour, but I think that's what we're going to stick to. The issue is, can we provide transportation?
Right.
You know, you know, it's not as easy as you can imagine, because remember, you know, lots of drivers are doing other runs in the afternoon, you know, they go to the next thing, although at the end of elementary school, most of our drivers are finished, except for the activity runs in the secondary schools, we may be able to.
Ms. Olshear, could you, to the point that you're making, the only way we're going to find out is if we are asking the parents, you know, what they're, what they will or won't be able to do, if we are implementing, or at this point, when we do implement
Yeah.
that after-school program, how quickly can we send out a survey so we can get the feedback, and you can have the data in terms of how we can roll this out? I mean, is that possible, can we do this, you know, sooner than later, so that we are, we are ready for September?
Oh, no, we're doing that this year.
Well, no, so that we are, yeah, so that we are ready.
But I, I'm not exactly sure of the dates, like, right now, we're looking for staff. One of the things that you have to do before you run these extra programs is have to, you have to make sure that the staff is available. So that's what, that's why it was posted, we're going to canvass the staff, hopefully they, you know, we get enough teachers that volunteer, and remember, we're looking at our teachers, perm subs, substitutes, anybody that is certified can, can, you know, come work for us. Now, once we have that, then we'll, we'll have that survey, so I would imagine in another week, or, you know, that week to two weeks, that will go out. I know we'd probably like to accomplish this before our February recess, so that when we come back in, in March, you know, we can look to do this. We're already, I mean, the cabinet has already, you know, put together, you know, instructional materials, kind of designed what the, that one hour, remember, we never do anything off the cuff, we don't shoot from the hip around here, all of our extracurricular activities are choreographed, we buy the materials, we train the teachers, and we have, they all have specific, you know, books to use, readings to use, and the hour will be choreographed on how to do it. So we, you know, I'm hoping a lot of people, now, we're having this conversation publicly, and people are listening, I don't want to disappoint people if we can't do the transportation. I'm going to say we're going to try to move mountains, that's why I wanted to talk to you guys before, but it's a good thing to talk about, but you have to do it, but I don't want to, you can see the challenges that we have, we have challenges, just regular transportation, adding another run might be difficult, but we're going to.
And the reason, and the reason I brought it up is because, you know, as a parent, you know, you, you may be willing to allow for your child to be there, if you know that this is going to happen on, you know, certain days of the week, that you're going to provide transportation yourself.
Right.
So I think that that might, that might just help you mitigate or answer some of the questions that you have.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So I was going to say, so getting that information back to you, so that you know how to, how to proceed, that's all it is.
Right, I see.
Yeah.
No, good point.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay. So, I think we were just saying that the Field Trip Central was just a small portion of what we provide for field trips, I think that's where we concluded from that, but there is a lot of other places that we do take field trip more for. Fifty-five forty-four thousand four thirty, BE Transportation is for the student workers that we have, so a lot of them come here and work in places in the district, I think Mark Ingram has set it up where we have networked those, those students to be able to go to outside locations, to work at other businesses, to provide them with real-world experiences, and that's the transportation that we provide to get them to those work sites. Fifty-five forty-four thousand four fifty-three, Music and Band, all these codes have been held flat, that is obviously for the transportation of our Music and Band program, who does a wonderful job, they usually make it Syracuse every year, do very well up there, but this is the code that we use for transporting the Music and Band to their competitions. Fifty-five forty-four thousand five Fuel, we're holding the study at a million, we haven't reached that level in past years, because we've had favorable fuel prices, they're becoming less favorable, if anybody's old heating oil, or just pulled up to the gas pump, see the prices are going up. So we're going to try to keep that level, and if we don't spend it, it obviously goes back to the community. Fifty-five forty-four thousand four hundred, McKinny Vento homeless, we developed this code last year, there was a regulation saying that we have to transport students who are McKinny Vento, McKinny Vento is just a, I guess, a homeless child who could live in another district and decide to still go here, even after they enter permanent housing for that year, and if it's a terminal year in a building for another year, and the district is obligated to provide transportation, and those transportation costs can go up pretty swiftly if you have a child who decides to become homeless and move out to Southampton, because that's where they could find a place to live with a family member, extended family member, before they come permanent, so we could be sending a bus two times a day out that far. So what we did is, we developed this code to kind of track those costs, to see what we were spending in this particular area, and that's what that is for, it's, we've been putting ten thousand in there and seeing where it's been going, so far, we've been doing okay there, so we're going to keep it flat. Fifty-five forty-four thousand, Public Service, this is, so you see, what is this? We've put five thousand here every year, and we never spend it.
We've had students that go to certain schools where they can take the train or the bus to get there, rather than, a public bus, rather than, you know, our buses, and, you know, if a student agrees to that, we, we send them that way, so that's what we would use that code for, and we have had it in the past, just, it's sporadic.
Sporadic, yeah, so public service carrier, I guess. Fifty-five eighty-one, I'm getting hold of these glasses, forty-nine hundred, BOCs, nothing is budgeted there. Fifty-five ninety-nine four thousand, Contingency, one hundred and fifty, we use this just in the event that something blows up and we need some money to take care of transportation, we have a little bit extra there to handle it, usually what that code is for, and we usually do a pretty good job, so we really never hit that code. But you never know, when gas prices start soaring, and can't find drivers, and who knows what's going to happen.
Is the BOCs transportation for our students who attend out-of-district BOCs programs? Or is that?
No, that would be for, like, our, our driving assistance, they have to take a physical performance test, and they take that initially with Suffolk Transportation, if they fail for some reason, they get retested through BOCs. So the kids that actually go to the BOCs programs, they're in those first four or five lines under fifty-five forty, the six-hour vans, the, you know, the four-hour vans.
Yeah, the shuttles that go to the BOCs program. And that's basically the whole transportation budget, does anybody have any particular questions in regards to that?
Simone had a question.
Oh, yeah, with the public service, because I know of kids who attend schools and they take the train and the bus, are the parents being reimbursed, how does that work?
We would actually buy the ticket, like a monthly pass, or, or something like that.
Are the parents aware, because I know of kids that attend, that take the train, and I don't think the parents are aware.
They attend private schools?
Mm-hmm.
From here?
They live in a district and attend private schools in the city and so on.
Oh, the city is beyond our transportation limit, so we wouldn't bus, we wouldn't allow that into the city, they'd have to be within fifteen-mile radius of our district if they're in a private school.
After that, they have to.
Well, we don't have a lot of, other than buses, I guess, trains, that would do that.
We wouldn't reimburse them for nothing at all, even if it's, you know, up to fifteen miles, or, they would have to be within the radius for them to be bused.
It would have to be an eligible private school in order for us to reimburse.
Okay, thank you.
You would think that McKinley Vento, is there another code somewhere else that we're providing services for the McKinley Vento students?
Yeah, that's a temporary code that we do until we can get them onto a regular bus, and then it goes back into, you know, those first four or five codes, the, well, probably a van code, we're not going to send a large bus for one child, but we may have to put them in a cab temporarily until we can get something going, so that's really what that code is used for.
Okay.
Right.
Something unusual.
Right. They're being bused, you know, we, we have a number that are being bused from other districts, and that's incorporated in the other, in the four-hour van, probably.
Should we keep ten thousand in there? I mean, that sounds like a lot when the most we've spent is like fourteen hundred, pre-COVID, I don't know, if we maybe use some of that for field trips or something?
If it's not spent, it always goes back to, back to the community.
I know, but I, just so we anticipate, you know, put it in a more realistic line that maybe could be used.
We could certainly shift some of that, or even if we leave it budgeted like that, and then something comes up during the year, we can transfer funds out of that code into the field trip code or somewhere else.
Mm-hmm.
So it's flexible.
We start there instead of having to transfer, maybe, something we can talk about.
I'll talk to you, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Interesting.
Because we could always do the reverse transfer as well.
Sure.
We have, you know, an area that's used more, maybe.
Understand, I mean, I, as long as I've been here, I don't know if anybody, we'll never turn down anybody for transportation, but, you know, I hear what you're saying, I mean, and, you know, why not? I mean, I hope next year is a banner year in terms of those field trips.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Any questions, okay? Thank you very much.
Eric, too, I got to thank Eric, too, if I could. Eric also has did a tremendous job for us, especially at the beginning of the year, you know, it was, yeah, he, he really did remarkable work. The community was a little frustrated in the beginning of the year, but that really, that was because transportation was having a tremendously difficult time getting, not Suffolk Transportation, as bad as other transportation companies, but we were down, we were down drivers, we were down buses, and, you know, Eric and Stacy actually jumped in, and they were, you know, rerouting, handling parent complaints and phone calls. I should also mention, too, that Eric and Stacy, for ten days, were working in the Transportation Department earlier this year, because all three clericals were out due to COVID, and they were, so they had to, you know, answer phone calls, you know, get onto the computer, you know, handle routing things, whatever the heck they do on the computer with these buses, and they did it, and I, you know, they did a remarkable job. And also, since Eric has taken over, I mean, I, I think it's, you know, it's a tough department, it's, it's tough to please everybody, but I think he's done a remarkable job over the last two years, you know.
Thank you.
And our driver's assistants work hard every day, Rhonda has allowed us to use Sean Coffin, we've given them training this year that they've never had before, it's called CPI, Crisis Prevention Convention, to give the DA some tools on how to manage students to recognize when they're getting a little anxious, and how to kind of diffuse that, the right things to say as opposed to the wrong things to say that might get them similarly. So the DAs have been getting a lot of positive feedback, they really appreciate it, they feel like, you know, the district's really looking out for them, thanks to Rhonda and Sean being able to come to some of these trainings.
Yeah, thanks, Greg.
We've written about four of the workshops so far, and at our refresher courses, I think we just set it for May 5th, this year, we're going to have Sean come back, I haven't talked to him yet, so if he, don't tell me, and I'm going to ask, I got to ask. If he'll come and show and do a little bit more on that, but it's been working out really well, so, you know, I'm proud of all the driver's assistants, Myrna, who manages them, does an outstanding job, as well as the ladies in the office, they really, they really pull their weight in helping out with the department, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Those were the budget areas that we want to cover for tonight's meeting, but I just want to mention something very quickly, we've talked tonight about, you know, having some money, you know, available to us, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about why, and, and that goes right back to our foundation aid, and just a very, very brief history of foundation aid, it originated in two thousand and six, after the campaign for fiscal equity, it was a promise made to all school districts that foundation aid would be phased in as per the formula that was established, and it would help the low-wealth school districts, you know, to equalize them with, with the higher wealth school districts, so more aid would be aimed at those lower wealth school districts. It started to be phased in in two thousand and seven, and then if you think back to that time, we had the double-dip recession, so although we had two years of a phase in, it stopped there, and then foundation aid actually went down for a number of school districts, if you remember back to gap elimination aid, it was a terrible time, you know, especially for us, a district so dependent on state aid. So Brentwood, recently, a few years ago, filed a complaint with the Federal Office of Civil Rights, as well as some other political subdivisions, and we, you know, basically saying the foundation aid formula is not being followed, we're being cheated out of our foundation aid, that aid that we're rightfully owed as per the formula, and we threw out a number there that we're down a hundred and thirty-five million dollars in foundation aid per year, and that's every year we get short, we were getting short at that. So the governor last year, twenty twenty-one, stated, agreed that we were underfunded and started to phase that foundation in, foundation aid in, that's actually this current year, I should say, twenty-one, twenty-two, we got a significant increase of thirty-five million in our foundation aid for this current school year. Last week, the governor released her budget, and again, this is the governor's budget, it is not the final state budget, and continued that, that pledge to phase in our foundation aid. So our projection right now for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and that's the year we're talking about building this budget, is a fifty-nine million dollar increase in foundation aid. So that would be year two of the three-year phase in. Again, it's a projection, it's the governor's budget, typically, in a school year, the governor comes out with a budget in January, then it gets negotiated at the state level, we've gone up several times to Albany to kind of, you know, help, explain our situation, and it typically goes up from the governor's budget, our final number, what we get. Don't know if I could say that'll happen this year, because we did quite well with the governor's budget, but we won't know for sure what we're going to get until April 1st, so I just have a printout up here of what we received, again, subject to change, I want to make sure I'm clear on that. Our overall change shows it fifty-six million, but the foundation aid increase, and I have arrows pointing to it there, is fifty-nine million. The reason that change is going down a little bit, I had presented debt service last week, two weeks ago, when we had the budget meeting, and we had a capital payment that kind of fell off, so our, what we have to pay out for the construction in the district went down by over two million, well, so did our building aid, we usually try to time that together. So building aid is only going down because we paid something off, so they're not going to aid us anymore, so that's why our overall aid would go down a little bit, but our foundation aid increase, you can see that they're projecting, is fifty-nine million. So statewide, in the governor's budget, it's a two-billion-dollar increase for education, one-point-six billion of that is foundation aid, four-hundred-and-seventy-million of that is for expense-based aids, if we think back to the former governor's budget a year ago, he wanted to combine expense-based aids into one category, so that would be our BOCs aid, our transportation aid, those were the two big ones there, our library materials aid, once you combine that, you don't aid that on the individual expenditures with those categories, it's essentially freezing it. Maybe you'll get a slight increase, but essentially, the growth that you experience in those categories, you wouldn't get aided on anymore. That proposal's not there this year, it's simply a positive, the governor's budget is just a positive budget for education all the way around. So I just wanted to, you know, let everybody know that, we'll talk about revenue a little bit later on, but that's the highlights of the governor's budget, any questions on that?
Any chance we could get lights on the field?
What field do you, what do you mean?
Football field. So we can have Friday night under the lights, football.
Well, hang around for a couple of years, we're going to have lots of lights everywhere.
So you know what, if I could just add to this, so typically, typically in, in any given year, you know, we are excited to get, you know, an additional, you know, ten million dollars, nine million dollars, God, I mean, it was, it was just so painful, and it was just, those are really, really rough times, but we had to make some tough decisions back then to make sure that we maintain the integrity of the finances of the district, those issues are no longer here, but that's, you know, that doesn't mean that we are going to spend without, you know, really, really critiquing everything that it is that we're doing, and I think that's the message that I want to send across, you know, just because we have because we have this, this incredible amount of money coming our way, doesn't mean that we're not paying attention. And I know that, you know, Stacy and the board members and Mr. Lochner, that's all ingrained in us now because we are so appreciative of what it is that we're getting now, we've gotta make sure that we are spending wisely, and I know that, I think it's been three board meetings in a row that Mr. Fritz has come up and he has mentioned this, you know, you've gotta make sure that we are spending this wisely, and, and I just want to say this publicly, that, you know, that we are committed to spending this money wisely because, again, you know, we don't know when the tide's gonna change. We don't know when this is, if, if it's ever gonna change, we hope that it doesn't, but, you know, it's possible. So, so as far as, you know, as I'm concerned, I've said this, you know, you know, numerous times, you know, I'm looking to rebuild the district, district back for the next fifty years so that we are, you know, setting ourselves up, using this money wisely for generations to come, and I know that that's a commitment that each and every one of us has, so thank you, Stacy, for your stewardship, you know, throughout these really tough times, and I hope, and I hope that this budget season is so much easier and so much more, it's, it's not as stressful as all the priors. I know that you've been a great assistance to us throughout the year, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And like you said, you know, we talked about transportation earlier, late buses, you know, if we could do that at the elementary school, and I'm always gonna look at that, you know, to see what's the best way to do that, even if it's a small amount of aid that comes back to the district, we're gonna get every penny back, you know, regardless of how much we get in state aid each year. That's just, I feel very passionate about that. I do that, you know, for myself, I do that for the school district. Eric absolutely feels the same way, so that thinking is never gonna stop.
Yeah, and, and to anybody who's just looking at this right now, you know, maybe you weren't here or weren't tuned in for the previous meetings, you know, we're, tonight's meeting was focused specifically on operations and transportation, so, you know, we are, I do believe, and I believe this with all my heart, that we are have, we have a very balanced approach in terms of how it is that we're spending money, so it's on the operational side and it's on the academic side, to the point that Mr. Lochner was talking about earlier, we are building in these educational programs, you know, before and after school. So it is, I believe, a very balanced approach as we're moving forward and, you know, trying to figure out how to best spend this money, so.
It is, we are very controlled, okay? We, you know, the cabinet and I meet and we discuss, you know, next year's increases. As you know, we're going to a nine-period day at the high school, and we've, you know, we're, we're very careful about the subjects and the coursework that we're bringing in and the teachers as well. So, yeah, we're, we're very careful, and it, it is ingrained in us, it's, which is not a bad thing. I mean, I think you always have to be very conservative and careful about how you spend your money, because quite frankly, I mean, you say, it, it, it will end, it will eventually end. I, I think we will go back to the days of, you know, sitting at the edge of your seat and we're only getting a few million dollars, and you have to remember, just two years ago, we actually went down five hundred thousand dollars, which was pretty devastating for the district, and we're certainly never going to forget that, and that's what, you know, so I, I think we'll always be very careful about what we, we spend.
I certainly hope my request for lights didn't prompt my frivolous spending.
I, well, that is not frivolous. Now, the reason I bring that up, Eileen, you know that we've mentioned, obviously, the turf fields.
Yeah.
And, you know, part of that project will, will include lights.
Right.
You know, and one of the things that we're really excited about is obviously a walking track for the community, which will be part of the construction project, and, you know, we're gonna put lights on two sets of fields, and we'll have to discuss, obviously, you know.
It's always nice if we have the opportunity, if opportunity arises that we capitalize, and if we can do it beforehand.
Absolutely.
Or not.
Right, right.
But, you know, considering all options and considering the budget, you know.
Right.
Not to put us in a hole over lights, but if we could do it, it would be nice.
Yeah. Now, did you mean across the street here? Is that what you?
The football field.
Okay.
This way.
Okay.
I don't know where we are anymore.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I was, that's not our. She was pointing the wrong way.
I'm thinking of people in the boardroom. I'm thinking of the boardroom.
Okay, that's why I didn't really answer you right away, because you were pointing across the street.
You know why? Because I'm sitting, I'm sitting in my seat in the back.
Okay. I wasn't sure where you were going with this.
Sorry. Not across the street, that's not our goal.
So, so at some point in, at some point in the future, we will roll that out so that the community is aware of what the plan is. You know, I, I've, I've had a chance to glimpse at it, and it's just spectacular, it really is, you know, just puts, it puts this district on a par with so many other districts who've had the luxury of having the resources and the money to do these things for their community, and, and it's just, really, it's incredibly exciting. I know that, you know, that, that, that we, we've been talking about these things, we've been dreaming about these things for such a long time.
Right.
Look, you know, it's, it sounds like it's gonna be a reality, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we could, you know, break ground on, on something, you know, and we'll, we'll have something that, you know, that's gonna be something to celebrate, and then get it done as quickly as possible because we have so many other projects to do, so, so, yeah, so you were pointing the wrong way, but the lights.
Yeah, that's fine.
But just, just so that you know, there's this minor detail that the lights would have to come in at the tail end of the entire project, but, but, but all that is, is thought of, so.
You know, I'd like a concession stand, remember when we had that argument that come in?
Oh, that's, that's.
We're getting that.
We were built in the concession stand, he said he could do it underneath the, the back, the back leechers.
We're getting that.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's in, that's in there.
We're gonna have a concession stand, what we'd like to do is also have bathrooms out there, concession stand, and I'd love to have a second floor where it could be an observation room as well as like a little classroom, you know.
Yeah.
So, that's all part of the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's pretty exciting. It should be, it should be noted, too, that actually is prior to, you know, this fifty-nine million, potential fifty-nine. We actually did a heck of a job budgeting the last few years, so we were preparing for this, you know, even prior to this kind of windfall here.
Yeah.
So.
So I have, is it's that money, I know we are using money from this year that we're living now, but the project won't be completed for another possibly one or two years, right?
Right.
So that, we're able to hold on to that money and not spend it as long as we allocate it?
Yeah, that's in a capital fund, so we're able to hold on to that, and it takes time, the state knows it takes time to get the plans through them and, you know, and then the actual construction phase, so, yeah, that'll stay there.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't in a spend it or lose it kind of situation where, you know, it's got to be done now.
Oh, I see. Yeah, no, it's in the Capital Reserve Fund.
I am excited.
So thank you to everyone for the presentations tonight.